Bonjour, messieurs et messieurs. Nous commencerons la réunion dans une minute. Bonjour, messieurs et messieurs. Bienvenue à la réunion du Conseil d'État de l'Ontoise le 14 mai. Pour ceux qui peuvent, souvenez-vous de vous lever pour prier et rester à la place pour la chanson du chanteur national. Dieu grandement, aidez-nous à travailler ensemble pour servir notre peuple. C'est un plaisir de demander à le conseiller Tim Tierney de présenter un invité très spécial qui va chanter le chanteur national. Le conseiller Tierney, s'il vous plaît.
Merci beaucoup, maire. Avec grand plaisir, je présente une étoile émergente de Beacon Hill, Seville. Petra Günther a 11 ans, elle assiste à l'école de base de Henry Monroe en sixe. Sa passion est pour le théâtre musical. Et récemment, elle a eu l'honneur d'être dans le cast comme Marta lors de la production de "The Sound of Music". Je vous donne une petite voix de talent, Petra.
Oh Canada, notre maison et nos nés. Vraiment l'amour patriarcat, dans tous nos signes. Quand on parle de ces beaux pays, ils savent porter la foi. Ton histoire, tu n'es pas pire, les plus brillants et explosifs. Quand qui me rend glorieux et libre. Oh Canada, nous sommes sur la carte pour toi. Oh Canada, nous sommes sur la carte pour toi.
Well, thank you very, very much, Petra. That was a beautiful rendition of "O Canada" and thank you, councillor Tierney, for choosing Petra to open our council meeting today. This time, I'd like to invite Mr. Hans Moore to the podium to accept this week's Mayor's City Builder Award and also invite Mr. Moore's councillor Keith Eggly, who's also the chair of the Transportation Committee. Mr. Moore is here to accept the City Builder Award on behalf of Citizens for Safe Cycling. Hans, thank you very much, a very familiar face around City Hall. Citizens for Safe Cycling is a voluntary organisation made up of cyclists who work for better, safer, environmentally friendly cycling in Ottawa.
Cette organisation est une association...
This organisation is a voluntary association made up of cyclists who work for a better, safer, environmentally friendly cycling in Ottawa.
We honour Citizens for Safe Cycling as 2014 is the 30th anniversary of their founding back in 1984. In addition, this week marks National Road Safety Week across Canada, so I'm happy that an organisation that has done so much to promote safe roads and safe cycling is here to be recognised for the good work that they've done in our city. Over 30 years, Citizens for Safe Cycling have been led by avid cyclists and worked to promote greater bicycle use, bicycle safety, bicycle infrastructure, and an overall respect for cyclists in the public domain.
Over 30 years, Citizens for Safe Cycling have been led by avid cyclists and worked to promote greater bicycle use, bicycle safety, bicycle infrastructure, and an overall respect for cyclists in the public domain.
We've had numerous successful projects to these ends, including the Lights, the Bike Initiative that saw 350 sets of bike lights handed out over the course of 2012, 2013, and the group has also played an important advocacy role ensuring that the interests of cyclists are represented in legislation at all three levels of government. As president of Citizens for Safe Cycling, Hans Moore has been a tireless champion for cyclists in Ottawa.
As the president of the Citizens for Safe Cycling, Hans Moore has been a tireless champion for cyclists in Ottawa.
Although today's award is in recognition of the group as a whole, I want to make special mention of Hans for all that he has done to ensure that Ottawa becomes a more bike-friendly city. As president of the organisation, he deserves a lot of credit for Citizens for Safe Cycling's direction and its success, and we're lucky as a city for all the work that he has put in. So on behalf of all members of council, Hans, and I know you have members of your group here, Citizens for Safe Cycling, congratulations. Thank you for the great work you do and happy 30th anniversary. (Applause).
So, I see that the mayor actually uses an even bigger font than I do. I think we're more or less the same age, but I don't want to admit to using reading glasses yet, so I'll try with font size 14. Mayor, it's an honour to accept the City Builders Award on behalf of Citizens for Safe Cycling and its members. We have about 220 members currently. The award signifies our contribution towards creating a better Ottawa. It also signifies the importance of the growing presence of cyclists in the city. The bicycle trip counter along the Laurier Segregated Bike Lane hit the 1 million mark just yesterday, as most of you probably heard, and I think that's a further proof that we're growing in numbers. The Laurier Bike Lane is one of the busiest downtown routes in all of Canada, actually. This year, as the mayor said, we celebrate our 30th anniversary and its many milestones. Hundreds of people have put tens of thousands of hours in volunteer time to educate the city and its citizens about the benefits of cycling. We see cycling as a transportation solution, but it also promotes health, it's economical, environmentally friendly, and coupled with our pathways, we strongly believe that it could draw a lot of tourism, and I say this as a Dutch person as well, I recognise that there's a lot of opportunities there. These benefits are shared with the city, with the business community, and with its citizens. Innovative cities worldwide choose for active transportation because they recognise that talented people ask for innovative cities. Citizens for Safe Cycling has fought for this already for 30 years. So we thank you for recognising our achievements and promise to keep raising the bar for future improvements to our city. Because we must stay vigilant, recently an engineering company, for example, that works with the city complained that everyone wants to have their own space nowadays, and he was bitterly complaining about all these cyclists and all these pedestrians. So when I said I was actually the president, he backed out a little bit. Pedestrians and cyclists were basically a headache for him. But that's not the mindset the city should tolerate, we think. We keep fighting for space for cyclists, for innovative solutions, and for safer roads. But we also want to do that with you, the public, and also with city council. We believe in a cooperative model, working with staff and councillors. We're looking forward to further improve the city. We believe Ottawa can be a leading cycling city, but we have to work harder to achieve this. The message in the Ottawa Bicycle Plan is loud and clear: our population wants to have safer roads, and cycling is a big part of that. Thank you very much.
(Applause). Roll call, Deputy Clerk, please.
Consulier Menin.
Pleasure.
Councillor Lewis.
Here.
Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor Alshen Thiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Present.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Eggly.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Consulier Fleury.
Present.
Councillor Clark.
Ici.
Councillor Holmes.
Here.
Councillor Hobbs.
Here.
Councillor McCrae.
Here.
Councillor Chernoshenko.
Present.
Councillor Hume.
Here.
Consulier Blay.
Here.
Councillor Thompson.
Present.
Councillor Moffat.
Here.
Consulier Drush.
Here.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
Here.
Look, could I mention, Mr. Mayor?
You have quorum.
It's of the 23rd of April 2014, carried. Declaration of Interests, including those originally rising from prior meetings. Monsieur Fleury.
Mr. Fleury, I declare conflict of interest, a potential one, regarding report 69 from the Planning Committee, item 15 on the agenda. Protocol, memorandum of agreement in Canada mine, because my father is an employee of Claridge Home, and Claridge Home is involved with this item. Anything else?
As presented, regrets, no regrets filed to date. Motion to introduce reports. Motion pour ta présentation de rapport, Consulier Thompson et Hume, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Hume, that Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee report 41, Environment Committee report 29, Finance and Economic Development Committee report 43, Planning Committee report 67A and 69, and Transportation Committee report 37 be received and considered.
Carried, carried. Committee reports, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee report number 41. Zoning 3247 and 3273 Moody Drive, carried. Carp Road Corridor zoning, stade changement de zonage de collier de chemin carp, carried. Zoning 669 to 681 Metal Ridge Circle, carried. Environment Committee report number 29, Energy Management and Investment Strategy, stratégie d'ajustement d'investissement énergétique. Adapté, carried. Finance and Economic Development Committee report number 43. Operating a capital budget Q1 status report, received. Delegation of Authority, Contracts awarded for the period of October 1st to December 31st, 2013. Delegation de pouvoir, contrat accordé pour la période de premier octobre au 31 décembre 2013, received. Innovation Centre Implementation, Business Feasibility Study, Funding Agreement and Land Lease Agreement. Mise en oeuvre de centre d'innovation étude de faisibilité en tant de financement et en tant de bail immobilier, carried. I want to thank Steve West, the chairman of the board, is with us, Bruce Lazenby from Imes Ottawa, and to thank Sad Basir and his team for the great work that they've done on this very innovative and exciting project at Bayview. So congratulations and thank you for being here. Appreciate all of your work. Item number eight, Brownfields Property Tax Assistance Rehabilitation Grants and Development Charge Reduction Programme, application 7947062 Canada Incorporated, 460 Sayloron Boulevard, carried. Item number nine, Amendment to the Agreement of Purchase and Sale for 2720 Richmond Road, former Grant Alternative School, modification de la convention d'achat et de vente de 2720 chemin Richmond, ancienne école Grant, carried, adapté. Item number 10, Offer to Purchase Parkway House 2475 Regina Street, carried. Item number 11, Feasibility Report on Potential Public-Public Partnership for Planned Recreational Complex in South East Ottawa. Rapport de faisibilité d'un partenariat public-privé pour le management d'un complexe recreatif prévu dans le sud-est d'Ataua, carried. Planning Committee report number 67A, Draft Revisions to Infill Bylaw 2012-147, Response to the OMB Intram Order on Appeal. Councillor Hume and Harder have a motion. Councillor Hume, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, if I could just introduce the motion to you. This is a milestone today in an awfully long debate that has captured both council and planning committee about infilling mature neighbourhoods. You know, we spent four years on this programme, started in 2010, and the bylaw that you have in front of you today was at Planning Committee on March 25th. And at that meeting, committee-directed staff told further talks with the applicant and other parties in order to clarify the language of the bylaw. Now, staff have complied with committee's direction, they've met with all the interested parties, and they have clarified some language in the bylaw so that the bylaw does not apply to mid or high-rise buildings, which have different challenges in terms of making them fit into the streetscape, and incorporated provisions that exempt cases where a new street is being created by plan of subdivision or where houses front on a private street. Now, Mr. Mayor, although this bylaw provides a certain level of clarity, I don't want to sugarcoat it and tell you that there are no points of disagreement. There still are points of disagreement between the city and those who have appealed the original bylaw, and they mostly have to do with front yard parking. Appellants, the appellants in this case, want front yard parking and the city doesn't. Those arguments now, can now be made at the Ontario Municipal Board. However, Mr. Mayor, the bylaw is a major step forward for our communities and for the city of Ottawa. It allows us to say to those constituents covered by the bylaw that we've listened to them and we've taken action to make infill fit better. You know, we've heard it time and time again, the planning committee and in other places in our communities, people don't mind infill, but they correctly say that it has to fit into the streetscape. And we're talking about what hits home most with people, and that's their own residential street, and this is about getting that fabric right. So I'm proud to say that we're really breaking new ground with this bylaw. As this council has in so many other files, whether it's CDPs, official plans, our development charges bylaw, this council has stepped forward and taken significant steps to make things more certain, to fund those things that are important to planning the city of Ottawa, our LRT programme and its expansion, and now we're breaking new ground here with this bylaw to allow, to protect the character of streets in those areas being affected by infill. We're the first city in Canada to come up with zoning that ties permissions to the character of the street. In a way, we're a lucky city to have all of the infill that we've been getting, over 1,600 units in the past five years in five central wards. That's what was the genesis of the bylaw that was in front of us, Mr. Mayor, and it caused us to delve into the detail of how to get things right. So, Mr. Mayor, it's about, and now it's boiled down to parking in most cases, and our staff have come up with a zoning based on a simple system. Your street gives you your rules as far as parking goes. You're allowed to provide it as long as you do it in a way that won't compromise the character of the street. It sounds really simple, doesn't it? But it took four years of staff time and almost 40 meetings just in the last year. We've also introduced new permissions to let the infill industry build new types of housing that respect the neighbourhood character and match today's market demands. We're the first city in Canada to recognise and allow the long semi. We're also the first city to let corner buildings wrap around a corner lot without a long list of variances. And, Mr. Mayor, the message has been all along, if it fits well, we'll be your friend. If it doesn't fit well, we'll ask you to take a long, hard rethink. And this bylaw allows us to do that. So, Mr. Mayor, the bylaw is in front of you. I'm looking for council's support as it needs to go to the OMB, where our staff will be tasked with defending just more than a zoning bylaw, but a series of precedent-setting rules that will make infill fit better. So, Mr. Mayor, I would encourage members of council to carry this bylaw.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on this? Otherwise, if there are, we'll hold it and come back. Carried. Carried on the amendment presented by councillor Hume and Harder, carried. On the report as amended, carried. Thank you very much, councillors Hume and Harder, and members of the planning committee and staff. I know this has been a very heavy agenda item for you. Next item is Planning Committee report 69, Application to Construct an Addition at 205 Crichton Street, a property designated under Part V of the Ontario Heritage Act and located in the New Edinburgh Heritage Conservation District. On the report, carried. Item number 14, Treasurer Statement on Development Charges, Reserve Fund for 2013. Communication de la trésorerie de la ville sur les rédevances des managements de 2013, received. Item number 15, Memorandum of Understanding, Millennium Park Protocol, en tant que parc millennium. Councillor Fleury has declared an interest on this item and has removed himself from the council table. On the report, carried. Item number 16, Zoning, 9 Leaming Drive, zonage neuf promenade Leaming, carried. Transportation Committee report number 37, rapport numéro 37 de comité de transport, realignment Greenbank Road and Southeast Transit Way, Cambrian Road to Barnesdale Road, environmental assessment study recommendations, carried. Item number 18, West Transit Way Detour Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Review. Examen de la sécurité des piétons et des cyclistes sur la deviation de Transit Way West, carried. Bulk Consent Agenda, ordre de jour regroupé. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? Councillor Hubley, please.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question, so I don't know if you want me to remove it.
Yeah.
The question is to do with item G, which is the purchasing year in review, and the question I have is, it's right near the top, it's Capone's Catering for $100,000. I'm just wondering, given that we don't cater to our meetings or anything anymore, how we've got such a high catering bill?
Who would... Mr. Byrne might have that. I know they run the catering operation at the sportsplex.
Through the mayor, that's exactly what it is. It's the, whenever we hold a city event at the MP and sportsplex, we're obligated to use Capone's catering.
I think, councillor, most of the retirement ceremonies and the long service awards ceremonies, I suspect, are the bulk of those. They all take... 31st, 2013, Delegation de pouvoir, Contrats accordés pour la période de premier octobre au 31 décembre 2013. Received. Innovation Centre Implementation, Business Feasibility Study, Funding Agreement and Land Lease Agreement, Mise en oeuvre de centre d'innovation étude de faisibilité en tant de financement et en tant de bail immobilier. Carried. I want to thank Steve West, the chairman of the board is with us, Bruce Lazenby from Invest Ottawa, and to thank Sad Basir and his team for the great work that they've done on this very innovative and exciting project at Bayview. So congratulations and thank you for being here. Appreciate all of your work. Item number eight, Brownfields Property Tax Assistance Rehabilitation Grants and Development Charge Reduction Programme, Application 7947062 Canada Incorporated, 460 Sayloron Boulevard. Carried. Item number nine, Amendment to the Agreement of Purchase and Sale for 2720 Richmond Road, Former Grant Alternative School, Modification de la convention d'achète et de vente de 2720 Chemin Richmond, Ancienne Ecole Grant. Carried, adopté. Item number 10, Offer to Purchase Parkway House 2475 Regina Street. Carried. Item number 11, Feasibility Report on Potential Public-Public Partnership for Planned Recreational Complex in Southeast Ottawa, Rapport de faisibilité d'un partenariat public privé pour le management d'un complexe recreatif prévu dans le sud-est d'Ataua. Carried. Planning Committee Report Number 67A, Draft Revisions to Infill Bylaw 2012-147, Response to the OMB Interim Order on Appeal. Counselor Hume and Harder have a motion. Counselor Hume, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, if I could just introduce the motion to you. This is a milestone today in an awfully long debate that has captured both Council and Planning Committee about infill in mature neighborhoods. You know, we spent four years on this program, started in 2010, and the bylaw that you have in front of you today was at Planning Committee on March 25th. And at that meeting, committee-directed staff told further talks with the applicant and other parties in order to clarify the language of the bylaw. Now, staff have complied with committee's direction, they've met with all the interested parties, and they have clarified some language in the bylaw so that the bylaw does not apply to mid or high-rise buildings, which have different challenges in terms of making them fit into the streetscape, and incorporated provisions that exempt cases where a new street is being created by plan of subdivision or where houses front on a private street. Now, Mr. Mayor, although this bylaw provides a certain level of clarity, I don't want to sugarcoat it and tell you that there are no points of disagreement. There still are points of disagreement between the city and those who have appealed the original bylaw, and they mostly have to do with front yard parking. Appellants, the appellants in this case want front yard parking and the city doesn't. Those arguments now, whether can now be made at the Ontario Municipal Board. However, Mr. Mayor, the bylaw is a major step forward for our communities and for the city of Ottawa. It allows us to say to those constituents covered by the bylaw that we've listened to them and we've taken action to make infill fit better. You know, when we've heard it time and time again, the Planning Committee and in other places in our communities, people don't mind infill, but they correctly say that it has to fit into the streetscape. And we're talking about what hits home most with people, and that's their own residential street. And this is about getting that fabric right. So I'm proud to say that we're really breaking new ground with this bylaw. As this council has in so many other files, whether it's CDPs, official plans, our development charges by law, this council has stepped forward and broken, taken significant steps to make things more certain, to fund those things that are important to planning the city of Ottawa, our LRT program and its expansion. And now we're breaking new ground here with this bylaw to allow, to protect the character of streets in those areas being affected by infill. We're the first city in Canada to come up with zoning that ties permissions to the character of the street. In a way, we're a lucky city to have all of the infill that we've been getting, over 1,600 units in the past five years in five central wards. That's a high, that's what was the genesis of the bylaw that was in front of us, Mr. Mayor, and it caused us to delve into the detail of how to get things right. So, Mr. Mayor, it's about, and now it's boiled down to parking in most cases. And our staff have come up with a zoning based on a simple system. Your street gives you your rules as far as parking goes. You're allowed to provide it as long as you do it in a way that won't compromise the character of the street. It sounds really simple, doesn't it? But it took four years of staff time and almost 40 meetings just in the last year. We've also introduced new permissions to let the infill industry build new types of housing that respect the neighborhood character and match today's market demands. We're the first city in Canada to recognize and allow the long semi. We're also the first city to let corner buildings wrap around a corner lot without a long list of variances. And, Mr. Mayor, the message has been all along, if it fits well, we'll be your friend. If it doesn't fit well, we'll ask you to take a long, hard rethink. And this bylaw allows us to do that. So, Mr. Mayor, the bylaw is in front of you. I'm looking for council's support, as it needs to go to the OMB where our staff will be tasked with defending just more than a zoning bylaw, but a series of precedent-setting rules that will make infill fit better. So, Mr. Mayor, I would encourage members of council to carry this bylaw.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on this? Otherwise, we'll, if there are, we'll hold it and come back. Carried. Carried on the amendment presented by Counselor Hume and Harder. Carried. On the report as amended. Carried. Thank you very much, Counselors Hume and Harder, and members of the Planning Committee and staff. I know this has been a very heavy agenda item for you. Next item is Planning Committee Report 69, Application to Construct an Addition at 205 Crichton Street, a property designated under Part 5 of the Ontario Heritage Act and located in the New Edinburgh Heritage Conservation District. On the report. Carried. Item number 14, Treasurer Statement on Development Charges Reserve Fund for 2013, Communication de la trésorerie de la ville sur les rédevances de management de 2013. Received. Item number 15, Memorandum of Understanding, Millennium Park Protocol d'Antenne parc millennium. Counselor Fleury has declared an interest on this item and has removed himself from the council table. On the report. Carried. Item number 16, Zoning 9 Leaming Drive, Zonage neuf, Promenade Leaming. Carried. Transportation Committee Report Number 37, Rapport numéro 37 du Comité des Transports, Realignment Green Bank Road and Southeast Transit Way, Cambrian Road to Barnesdale Road, Environmental Assessment Study, Recommendations. Carried. Item number 18, West Transit Way Detour Pedestrian and Cyclist Safety Review, Exam de la sécurité des piétons et des cyclistes sur la déviation de Transit Way West. Carried. Bulk Consent Agenda, Ordre de jour regroupé. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the bulk consent agenda? Counselor Hubley, please.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question, so I don't know if you want me to remove it.
Yeah.
The question is to do with item G, which is the purchasing year in review. And the question I have is, it's right near the top, it's Capone's Catering for $100,000. I'm just wondering, given that we don't cater to our meetings or anything anymore, how we got such a high catering bill?
Who would, Mr. Byrne might have that. I know they run the catering operation at the Sportsplex.
Through the mayor, that's exactly what it is. It's the, whenever we hold a city event at the MP and Sportsplex, we're obligated to use Capone's Catering.
I think, Counsel, most of the retirement ceremonies and the long service award ceremonies, I suspect, are the bulk of those. They all take place, I think, four times a year at the Sportsplex.
Well, that's what it is. It's not meetings, okay? Thank you.
Good point, thank you. Anything else on the bulk consent agenda? On the bulk consent agenda as presented. Carried, thank you. Disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authorities. A motion to adopt reports, Motion pour ta adoption de rapports, Counselors Thompson and Hume, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hume, that Agriculture-Rural Affairs Committee Report 41, Environment Committee Report 29, Finance and Economic Development Committee Report 43, Planning Committee Report 67A and 69, and Transportation Committee Report 37 be received and adopted as amended.
On the motion. Carried. Motions of which notice have been previously given, notice has been previously given, rather, Counselor Deans, seconded by Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Deans, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief, but the motion in effect is to once again declare June as seniors' month in the city of Ottawa. Counselor Wilkinson and I have been putting this motion to council for a number of years, and we're happy to do it again this year. This motion allows for the recognition of the outstanding contributions that senior citizens make to our community. Seniors give generously of their time. Among them, there are an army of volunteers integral to the health and well-being of our community. It's important that we take the time to honor them in this special way. And I know that many members of council around this table will be hosting events in June in our wards to honor our seniors and to share information with them regarding the city's many programs and services aimed at seniors' quality of life and aging in place. So, Mr. Mayor, I ask that you support this motion today and recognize June as a way to celebrate our seniors in the city of Ottawa.
Great, thank you very much. Anyone else on the motion? Carried, thank you. Notices a motion, or rather, motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. I have a motion seconded by Counselor Tierney with respect to the city of Ottawa formally requesting an opportunity to bid on AMO conferences on suspension of the rules. Carried. So this is a motion, I'll just read the first little portion here. Whereas the Association of Municipalities of Ontario requires a council-approved motion by May 16th, 2014, for Ottawa Tourism to bid on the 2017, 18, 19, and 20 Annual General Meetings of AMO. This is, as you know, we've hosted a number of occasions, and it's been very good for the local economy because this is a convention that takes place in August, which is traditionally a slow period for conventions, and it's something I think we could all see ourselves supporting. So on the motion. Carried, thank you. The next motion requiring suspension is by Counselor Blowus, seconded by Counselor Fleury with respect to Counselor Tierney's continued participation on FCM on the suspension. Carried, Counselor Blowus, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to skip the preamble unless some of our colleagues need to have a little more time here, but depending on what you're projecting. Basically, this is whereas we, FCM requires a motion confirming the city's representative, therefore be it resolved that council endorse Counselor Tim Tierney as the city's representative to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities.
Yays and nays?
Dissent.
Carried, carried. Thank you, Counselor Tierney, for representing us so well. The next motion that requires suspension of the rules of procedure is by Counselor Cadri, a motion to amend the composition of the Transit Commission as a result of a resignation of a member on suspension. Carried, Counselor Cadri, please, seconded by Counselor Egley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And yes, you said it all in terms of, this is for the reorganization of the Transit Commission in a sense. I'll just read the three wherashes and then get to the therefore be it resolved. Whereas the four citizen representatives appointed to the Transit Commission were given a term to expire on November 30th, 2014, with a current term of council. And whereas the citizen representative Blair Crew tendered his resignation from the Transit Commission on April 22nd, 2014. And whereas at the city, at the start of the new term, city council will be conducting regular reexamination of the council and committee structures as part of the governance review report, including a review of the current Transit Commission model and composition. And whereas there's no list of reserve commissioners to call upon for replacement purposes for to, in this circumstance. And whereas due to the time of the year and the time required to advertise, recruit, interview, and appoint a successor to the commission, therefore be it resolved that council receive the resignation of Mr. Crew and approve the revised composition of the Transit Commission to be eight members, elected councillors, and three citizen representatives for the remainder of this term.
The motion, carried. Thank you, Counselor Cadri.
Thank you.
Are there any other motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure at this time? Notices a motion for consideration at subsequent meetings. Counselor Holmes, seconded by Counselor Clark, Counselor Holmes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are two motions. One is for Spark Street, and that's to, because the block between Bank and Kent is now closed for renovations to the Bank of Canada building by the federal government, this is a request to instead use the Lion to Bay block as the fifth block for this Rib Fest. And the Federal Office Building in that block is vacant, and the hotel is vacant, so there are little users of that block as well. So it's a motion to have a road closure for their Rib Fest. The second motion is about Bank Street, and that is a Glow Fair Music Light Art Event, new this year, very exciting. Just to say that all the cross streets will remain open. The blocks between the cross streets are closed for the duration of this weekend event. The businesses on the street are very much in favor of this event, so it's a request for those two road closures, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. So we'll deal with those at the next meeting. The next notice of motion is Counselor Fleury, seconded by Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is about the National Health and Fitness Day. It's the second year for which we're doing this. I can read the motion, but basically it's to highlight on June 7th, our participation in terms of allow, getting people to know our programs, obviously, but also allowing access to fitness and physical activity in our city. Do we require more information, or does everyone?
It's a notice of motion. We'll just, it's Bob McQuarrie Recreation Complex, not Brian McQuarrie, so we'll just change that on the motion.
It's his grandson.
That's right. Okay, thank you. The next notice of motion requiring, to be dealt with at a subsequent meeting is by Counselor Hume, seconded by Counselor Harder, Counselor Hume, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a little bit of an odd motion because it asks to amend our rules of procedure, and it relates to the approval of a development charge, our development charge bylaw. Traditionally, members of committee would be allowed to come to the floor of council with a motion, have that motion approved, and implemented immediately. Unfortunately, because of the substantive nature of a change that could occur to the development charge bylaw that could affect the charge that we are charging people, we have to do a lot of work to determine what that is, how the charge changes. So what we're requesting is that council amend its rules of procedure such that all substantive motions to amend the development charge background study and bylaws be submitted to the clerk and solicitor no later than Friday, June 6th, at 4:00 p.m., to allow staff to prepare the amendments, should the motions be approved, on the understanding that any substantive motions after that time will be ruled out of order because we won't be able to amend the charge in time to get it in place. We're also asking that the development charges, background study, and bylaws be considered as the first item on the agenda, such that if there are substantive motions, then we would have time between the consideration and the, and the implementing bylaw, I forget, sorry, I've lost what it's called, but the confirmation bylaw, to allow us time to make sure that we've got appropriate final changes to the development charges bylaw, so that there, we would, we're not in jeopardy after passing it of not having the right charge in place based on council's desire. And that is always a fear. I hope I've clarified that rather than.
This is a notice of motion.
Yes, it is.
We'll deal with it. So it gives people a chance to think about it, and then it'll be debated in the next council meeting.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, it's a little complicated, but that is the nature of development charges.
Okay. Are there any other notices of motion for consideration at a subsequent meeting? Motion to introduce bylaws, Motion pour ta présentation de règlement, Concier Thompson, s'il vous plaît.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hume, that the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Carried. A confirmation bylaw, Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Hume, that the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of May, of the 14th of May, 2014.
Carried. Before inquiries, I'd like to take a moment to give an update on two items that I spoke about in my State of the City speech. One is murals on underpasses. As many of you know, murals will brighten up two underpasses by the end of the summer as part of a new streetscape initiative. Similar to the artwork under Highway 417 on Preston Street in Little Italy, murals will be created by artists to beautify and enhance these underpasses as key gateways to the city with images that reflect and depict local culture, history, or visions of artistic expression.
Outside murals are efficient to fight against vandalism and graffiti while promoting economic development.
Graffiti, vandalism, supporting arts and culture and contributing to economic development. Two underpass mural locations were selected for this pilot project, 417 underpass at Metcalf Street and Riverside at Bronson Bridge. One wall of each underpass will have a mural promoting Ottawa as the place to be to celebrate Canada's 150th anniversary, and on the opposite wall, a local artist will install a community-inspired mural after a neighborhood-specific public consultation. And demand a qualification.
A qualification proposal will be sent in May, and it should be done in August 2014.
Artwork is expected to be completed by the end of August 2014. Public art, like these murals, reinvigorates main streets and brings vitality and civic pride to community cores. This project complements the city's commitment to promoting local artists by promoting public art. I want to thank the provincial government for giving us permission for the 417 underpasses, and I look forward to this project extending to all parts of the city in the years ahead. The second item is the 2017 Ideas Forum. I'm pleased to announce that the 2017 Task Force co-chairs Rayner Blowus and Catherine Hobbs and I will be hosting an Ideas Forum at City Hall on June 8th from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. in council chambers to engage community groups, businesses, and our arts and cultural communities in our preparations for the 2017 celebrations in Ottawa.
I have the pleasure to announce that we will have an Idea Forum, June 8th, at City Hall. This forum aims to make possible the participation of cultural and artistic participants.
Of the place to be in 2017, but obviously we can't do it alone.
Our success strategy is clear. It is based on the coordination of our efforts with those of our partners, as well as the public.
This includes a well-coordinated local effort that engages our partners and the entire community. The Ideas Forum will be a venue to engage these groups in this once-in-a-generation opportunity. It will be a chance to talk about ideas business and community members may have for Canada's big year, and to, and for them to join us as partners, building on the tremendous work that our 2017 Task Force has already begun. I'd encourage you to encourage people in your own wards to come to that Ideas Session on June 8th. As I said, it's taking place right here in the council chambers, and we look forward to great ideas coming from all corners of the city of Ottawa. Are there any written inquiries, Madam Deputy Clerk? Adjournment, Counselor Thompson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved myself, seconded by Counselor Hume, that the proceedings of the city council meeting of the 14th of May, 2014, be adjourned.
Carried. Meeting adjourned, merci, thank you.